Right, we're going to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the September 2023 zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This is the first meeting that we've had in person in what, two and a half years? So in fact, some of us have never actually sat on the board in the same room. It's only been by Zoom up until now. So we are going to begin by after I call the meeting to order, we're going to do a roll call. It's possible that if any of the members come in late, they will, well, it depends on where we are in the hearing. We might have to change the order, but right now we have all regular commissioners, no alternates present. So I'm going to ask staff if they'll read the roll call.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Nadeem?
Here.
Mr. Llewellyn? Absent. Mr. Cloud?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Schoenhorn?
Here.
And alternate John Healy is on Zoom. Just for the record.
It's my understanding that, that unless we hear otherwise, that if a meeting is hybrid, that means only that the applicants can appear by Zoom and other people who wish to speak, but the commissioners need to be present in the in the room in order to be able to vote, although I will exercise discretion as the chair to allow members who are not present to at the very least speak and ask questions of any of the people who speak. So we have two hearings tonight, and I'm going to start by asking the secretary to read the official notice of tonight's meeting.
Notice is hereby given that the zoning Board of Appeals will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, September 18, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Green Earth Roofing Solutions LLC application for variance to locate ground mounted solar array in other than required yard for a corner lot for property located at 227 Talcott Knott's Road, R80 Zone. Barry S. Hannenbaum application for variance to locate detached garage in other than required yard for a corner lot for property located at 96 Farmington Avenue, R9 OG Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. The link to the meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at www.farmingtonct.org/AboutFarmington/CalenderMeetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at www.farmington-ct.org/government/zoningboardofappeals or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, August 31, 2023, Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, John Schoenhorn, Chairman.
All right, so as the notice just indicated, we have a procedure that we abide by, and we will first go to the Green Earth Roofing Solutions application. Anyone who wishes to speak will go up to the microphone because there are people who are listening in remotely, they have to be able to hear you, and you'll notice there are no microphones on the table. So anyone who's going to speak needs to go up to the microphone, identify themselves, and also their address for the record. And the way this will work is we will hear first from the applicant. The applicant will have to answer questions, if there are any, from the members of the of the board, and then anyone after that who wishes to speak in favor of the application will be given that followed by the, anyone who's opposed. So there will be no interjection. We do it in an order, and then we will, if the applicant wishes to respond to anything that's been raised in opposition, they will be given that opportunity to do so as well. So let's begin with the applicant for Green Earth Roofing Solutions for 227 Talcott Knott's Road. Is there a person present to be for the application? So we're going to ask you to come up to the podium, please, and identify yourself and your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Taylor Sakurka, the president and owner of Green Earth Roofing Solutions. My address is 16 Sunrise Drive, Canton, Connecticut.
All right.
We, we also have Chris Sakurka attending via Zoom, who is the specialist on this project for Talcott.
And you are the actual applicant who lives at that address?
No, we are the contractor
Okay.
who applied for the variance
All right.
on his behalf.
So why don't you present us your, your presentation, and then we'll have some questions perhaps?
Okay. Has Chris joined?
Yes, Chris is online. He should be able to speak.
I have to, I have it. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, and we can see you as well. Please identify, are you going to be first or who's going to be speaking?
It would probably be if that's okay with you folks.
Of course, just please identify yourself by name and address, please, and
Sure.
the applicant.
Sure. My name is Christopher Sakurka. My address is 208 Shaker Road, Long Meadow, Mass. And my relationship to the applicant is that I am the developer of the project for Mr. Mohammed Zubari.
All right, would you like to make your presentation, please?
Sure. So our, our desired project is to construct a 21 KW ground mount system on the side yard of Dr. Zubari. That is indicated, I'm on my screen here with the Zoom meeting, I am looking at a site plan, and it is showing the location of the ground mount system in relationship to Dr. Zubari's house, and also in relationship to the private road that is showed on the north side of this site plan. The, the construction of this solar array is 21 KW, and as a developer with a very large level of experience in both Connecticut and Massachusetts, this is simply a ground mount system. I've seen language of a solar field. This is very much not a solar field, but a very simple solar array simply to handle the electrical load of Dr. Zubari's residence and his family's usage of electricity here at, here at the, at their home property. I do know, I don't know if it's been uploaded or not, but in addition to this site plan, I took the opportunity this weekend to draw a couple sketches of where this solar array would be located in relationship to both Dr. Zubari's house and to the setback requirements for the town of Farmington, and what measures were being taken as not to in any way detract from any of the butter's visual view, and also, you know, what, what would be taken to make sure that the beautification of the property was such as not to detract from anybody's real estate or aesthetic view, but actually improve the aesthetic view that has until very recently been at the property. This first view is, is showing, and I'm hoping I'm looking at the same one that everybody else's, the view from the private road, directly looking at the array, and as can be seen here in the picture, the only, and this is, this is on a year one basis, not over succeeding years, but simply as planted or as developed in the very near future. This is what would be, this is what would be viewed from, directly from that private yard. And Taylor, I don't know if you can have the ability to show the, what is the dark blue, please don't go to the next picture yet, sorry, as the triangles, these dark blue triangles, but that would be the only element that would be showed of the construction, and that would not even be of the solar array. That would be from a dark blue or dark green nylon mesh that would be affixed to the array for essentially camouflaging the installation there, and the trees that you see that are between looking at the private road and, and the array are showing a variety of evergreen trees that would subsequently grow even higher, right, and eliminate even those, the, what you see here in this picture as like the dark blue triangles that are, you know, facing downward, right? So this would be the view from that side road. If you, Taylor, if you could please go down to the second page. This, this would be the view that would be seen from the public road in which is completely camouflaged and out of view, both by the additional landscaping that's put in and with the installation of several birch trees, right, that would block the view from the road, you know, from the public road. You can see lit literally almost nothing of the solar array at all. So those, those are my comments as it relates to addressing what either in a butter would see or a neighbor would see either driving down that private road or on the public road that this picture is taken from.
Aaron, are those images that we're seeing on the screen, are they part, now part of the record?
They are now. I did got them late this afternoon. It was too late to send out to the commission.
So what we're seeing on the screen, that's the first time we're seeing that?
Yes, correct.
And, and I could just ask you one question, sir. When you say these pictures, are these, these are drawings?
These, these are drawings that I drew in, in the last 48 hours, just to try to give a appreciation for, you know, what was really, you know, at issue here, you know, from my standpoint, you know, the concept of what has been done at Dr. Zubari's house has been more of, obviously, we don't have any approval on his zoning thing yet, but in terms of the measures that have been made so far have been in terms of a beautification project to make the side yard of Dr. Zubari and his family's home to be, increase the value of his property and beautify it in a way that, you know, is in fitting, that is in fitting with the beautiful work that his neighbor who owns the property on the private way has done, you know, since he's owned the property, and on the other side of the street, you know, there's obviously some very attractive landscaping, and we have like followed their lead, so to speak, in terms of changing what has been, if you look at the many pictures that I don't think are part of the record, on that side yard of the property, there was a number of dead trees that have significant poison ivy vines, some, you know, as much as five inches in diameter, and literally like a crazy application of like poison ivy, and so he has embarked to beautify this side lawn to make it into a park-like setting.
And before I turn it over to questioning, I just want a clarification. The two drawings that we're looking at, do they show the actual solar panel array, or am I just looking at the landscaping where, in lieu of the actual panels? I'm not sure.
That's a great, that's a great question, and, and so that is in both of these sketches that I made, they are, both pictures are showing the array in place in terms of what would be seen from from the perspective that is shown in each of the sketches. So in this first one, if you can see the arrow that's listed, the horizontal dark blue line is the top of the array. And that array, the, that is not the solar side of the array, but the backside of the array, the southern exposure is actually facing the house. And this is the backside of the array, and that backside of the array would have a nylon dark green or dark green material, right, which would essentially mask what would otherwise be the framing of the array, and then the combination of the various evergreen trees on the backside of the array are even masking that, right? So that's, that this is what you would, this is what somebody would see after the installation of the project from the view of the private road. And Taylor, if you go to the second photo, and I apologize about this because I was, I was doing this photo. If, hey, if you can just drop your arrow about a half an inch from where it was, a little bit higher and to the right, that would be the corner of the array. And obviously, the ray is going away from us, right? So it's, it's somewhat going in parallel to Dr. Zubari's house, and also to a certain extent, parallel to the private road, and that is shown in context in the very darkest blue, and what you are looking at, what is in like sort of an emerald green, and then in also in a lighter aqua blue is the tops of the trees that are planted behind the array. And then in the front of the array, there are at least two birch trees that are planted in direct in the direct path from a visual, right? So that from the public road, right, that there is very little, very little of the array that is shown. And, you know, I have just from a representation perspective, shown like the various islands that, that will be constructed, you know, as part of the beautification project for Dr. Zubari.
You're pausing. Are you, have you completed your presentation?
I've completed my presentation.
All right, so I'm going to call on members of the board to ask questions. We'll start with Mr. Walsh.
Can you just go back to the first picture? I'm trying to understand how the array is going to lay compared to the house, because you're saying it's going to be parallel to the house?
Yes, Taylor, could you please go to the site plan, overhead site plan? So you see, you see this picture here, and that picture is show, this is a purely bird's eye view, right? And so if you look at the relationship of the ray to the home, you will see at the most northern side, this array will be on approximately a 30-degree angle, and the front of the ray, which is closest to the house, those modules will be approximately like, let's say, like 24 inches off the ground. And in the array, in the, the most northern row, if you can point to that, Tay, right? Laura, you, you probably have the exact dimension, right? But those are essentially that whole, that whole combination of the four rows, right, is at a, is at a 30-degree angle, right? So then when you go to that first picture, what we are looking at would be if we were, we will be hanging, we will be attaching, affixing a dark green nylon material to the framework from the top of the array to the ground to, to essentially provide a durable curtain as to not be able to see beyond that curtain. So from that rectangular area, that would just come, that would just have the visual appearance of having a rectangular dark green curtain.
And how, how high off the ground is that, the backside of it?
Laura, do you have that info?
Eight, eight feet. Okay. Eight plus, it's in the application material somewhere. It's eight and a half.
All right, no more questions. Commissioner Nadeem?
One of the questions on the application is, why is this a hardship unique to the premises? And you answered not applicable. Is there a hardship that you're claiming that is a requirement for us in granting variances?
I, I'm not, I myself am not familiar with the definition of the word hardship, but is part of the hardship definition have to do with economically feasible?
No, in terms of hardship, it means why can, I guess your answer is economic hardship, but why is the applicant unable to conform with the requirements? For example, why not place them on the roof of the home?
No, okay, thank you very much. That's, that's a great, that's a great question, right? So the orientation of the home is east to west. And so there are, there's a roof line, you know, that is almost sitting exactly to the east and a roof line exactly to the west. And then on a much smaller basis with the garage, there is a roof line facing in the southwest and a roof line facing in the northeast. Now, more of the issue, particularly with the roof, is that you have, and I think it's denoted on this particular print, the location of various trees that are perceived at least from our side of the table as being within what would be considered to be in the wetlands, right? And so there aren't the options for addressing that in terms of removing trees because of the environmental conditions in Connecticut relative to like what would allow you to be able to cut down trees within the setback of a wetlands, and there's a, I don't know if it's shown on this particular print, but specifically to not too far from those trees is an actual brook that flows through the property. So those trees and those, the trees on this particular property on the south side present a very significant shading consideration that would, would that are very detrimental to having a significant solar yield from, you know, what is allowed onto the roof.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions right now.
Commissioner Callahan?
So am I correct in understanding that the answer is that if you put this array in the, in the location required by the zoning regulations, i.e. behind the principal wall of the building, it would not get as much exposure to the sun and therefore a lower yield?
Yeah, it would, it would actually be, Laura, are you showing that right now? Yeah, so it's, it's almost this, Laura, can you, I don't know if you have the ability to pull up the Aurora, which actually will show you the yield or lack thereof, but it's, but it's almost, it's, it's, it's de minimis compared to
So, but it's a yield issue, and I'm asking this issue to follow up on Commissioner Nadeem's question about hardship, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, it would never yield anywhere near as close of the energy that is necessary for, for Dr. Zubari. Uh, that is necessary for for Dr Zubari. And in order to do so, my my guess is is that it um. It would be prohibited from any of the environmental statutes associated with wetlands. In removing trees in a in a setback of a wetlands.
Alright, and we've talked about the height of the panels at the front of the array and at the back of the array. What are the other dimensions, i.e. how long is this proposed array? And what's the width from the front to the back?
Um, Laura, do you have those? Could you, could you identify those?
Chris, we do not have um the ability to pull up Aurora um as part of the submittal. But it is approximately eighty feet wide.
Eight feet wide?
Eighty feet wide.
Eighty feet long?
Yes.
Alright.
How wide?
How wide is it, top to bottom?
Top to bottom is um.
I'm looking, Taylor, I'm looking at uh a com- a total height off grade as being ten foot four.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Commissioner Clav?
Well, let me say, first of all, as a former resident of Targa Notch, I think I know um that address um and that home. My question, I guess, my colleagues have asked most of the pertinent questions. But does this oscillate or tilt in any way? Is there any movement to this um solar ray that would be seen as a distraction? Or is it flushly mounted and?
This, yes, that's a, that's that's a great question. And so in um here, here in uh New England and particularly Connecticut. Relative to what our uh latitude is, right? Um, in terms of arrays that, you know, are gonna follow. Um, you know, the the sun, you know, in its uh, you know, position during the course of the day. Um, because, you know, because we have like solar yielding months. Being from essentially like April to October, right? Um, those type of arrays are uh tend tend to not be very economical. Um, this array um would have um solid. Uh, footings, right? You know, that would be to code, you know, uh buried in concrete. And it would be a fixed array and lit literally. Um, by uh the second year. You know, once the various spruce trees um and various plantings. Are well underway of growing, you know, uh it's it's my. Uh, opinion that there would never even be seen. Even that small triangular areas that we have. Uh, camouflaged in behind the, you know, uh dark green nylon. Uh, material, you know, would never even be seen.
In addition, the panels are anti-reflective. So there's should be, there's no distractions coming from the array.
Mm-hmm. And final question, as I looked at the map, I believe, is that Northingway that I'm looking at, that the private drive?
Yes.
So is there any, i- is there any um blockage or abreviatee that exists currently? Or has that been contemplated to avoid any view of?
Yeah, so if if um um Kay, could you please pull up this scene? Right? So at at present time, like the pri- uh that that's a private driveway. And the owner does like a impeccable job of like maintaining, you know, his uh. What I'm gonna call like, you know, his easement or what have you, right? And so um, one of the things that Dr Zubari and I uh talked about was like. You know, we we would, we want to be able to match uh the beautiful landscaping that he has. In his property, both on both sides and all the way down onto his front yard. So if you um, and I apologize about my artwork, folks. But um I'm showing the various uh uh types of uh evergreens. That are showed there, right? Um, he does have uh landscaping at present time with some. Um, you know, nice uh decorative uh tree, small trees. On each side of of his uh access road. And we we would be simply matching that in kind all all, you know, for the duration of this sideline.
There's nothing currently there. Uh, what was currently there was invasive species, overgrown brush. Um, no decorative, so the project is to be a beautification of the project.
Well said. Thank you for your answer. Appreciate it, yeah.
Commissioner Healy online, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanna go back to the colloquy that Commissioner Callahan was having about the the sizing. So uh, sir, you you had estimated the the length of the array to be approximately eighty feet?
Uh, Taylor, can you please give that answer? Uh, because it's it's, folks, it is exact, right? It is literally an array that has four rows of. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven modules. And those modules measure measurements are exact. So Tay, what is, what is the exact measurement of that length, of 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 the length of the array?
As I say before, I believe it's uh eighty feet.
So, Taylor, by by that calculation, each module is approximately seven. And change feet long. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so so we're, so the the that initial bird's eye view schematic showing forty-four panels. Um, is accurate. You're contemplating forty-four panel, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Just uh, and then to follow up on the conversation with Commissioner Nadine. Um, where, sir, you had said uh economic hardship. And then with Chairman, or excuse me, Commissioner Callahan, I believe you were saying uh it's a yield hardship. So I just would just like clarification on uh, you know, what is, what is the hardship here? And if in fact it is an economic hardship, I would like to know what in particular the economic hardship is. Especially given the scope of the entire beautification project uh for this property.
Um, I I apologize, but um can you please repeat the last sentence that you said?
Sure, I I apologize for it being multi-part. I guess the first part would be with Commissioner Nadine. You had said uh that it was uh that you you were seeking a variance as in uh or under an economic hardship. Uh, but then with Commissioner Callahan, you said that it was a yield hardship or a geographical hardship. I'm just, I just wanna clarify what the hardship is uh for the variance.
Okay, I I understand your question. Thank you very much. So um uh, the yield hardship. Translates into the economic hardship, right? So um in this design for the ground mount. The solar array is facing um. You know, from a practical perspective, almost like uh solar south, right? And because of where we have it positioned now. Uh, the solar irradiance is uh virtually uh. You know, pure and not diminished at all, you know, uh by the. Uh, trees on the on the property, right? Um, if we were to place the array on the house. Because of the location of the surrounding trees that is shown in this particular, yeah. Uh, on this particular plan. Um, the solar irradiance is significantly less. And when I say significantly less, I'm not saying like uh ten percent, I'm saying like forty percent less, right? And so that irradiance, as we all know, um, you know, uh. In in the state of Connecticut, in Eversource territory, right? Um, the residential cost of uh electricity. On a kilowatt hour basis, you know, uh between. Uh, generation, transmission and distribution is in the thirty cent, thirty plus cents. Um, uh ballpark, right? And the delta that would exist would be that. Um, the production would be uh significantly less on a rooftop system because of the trees. And because of its orientation being both to the east and west as opposed to solar south. And that multiplied by Eversource's cost of electricity. Uh, not for one year, right? But for the investment period, right? Which would be approximately thirty years, right? Uh, comes down to being like a a very, very significant amount of money.
Thank you. Um, and you know, I I certainly don't profess to be a solar expert. But um, in your professional opinion, um, you know, this array is designed. To match the needs of the house and little more?
Yes, um, so um, so uh my understanding is that Dr Zubari. Um, we we've designed the system to uh uh Laura, could you possibly pull up? Uh, the, I don't know what the usage is for Dr Zubari's house. But um uh, and it's been a, it's it's been a while. Uh, since I designed the system with uh Laura and Taylor. Um, but I believe that the system is taking care of uh Dr Zubari and his family's usage. Um, plus the addition to uh, plus the addition for um what is a. Uh, you know. Uh, latest technology in air-to-air heat pumps, right? To displaces uh uh fossil fuel usage that that is presently on the property. But it is, it is to handle the vast majority of 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 his electrical usage.
Thank you. Um, I guess I really don't have anything else other than to say, uh, you know. I'm very, very impressed with your artistic abilities. Thank you very much.
Well, given, given the fact that I'm uh my primary caretaker to my elderly mom's hospice. Um, I I whipped that up yesterday and this morning in hopes that it would at least give people a visualization. That it wasn't this uh hostile uh, you know, solar farm, right? Let's destroy all the trees and the in the wildlife, right? Because we're we're really just trying to make it sort of uh harmonic in terms of the natural surroundings. But thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, and um as Chair, I go last, so let me just ask a few questions. And I'll preface this by saying that, you know, I've been on record in the past as being in favor of solar arrays. Because um I think that our future depends upon alternative sources of energy. So, you know, I see the importance of that, but I have some concerns about this particular array. And let me just ask a couple of questions. And again, it goes to our statutory obligation to look at hardship. And and is what, and one of the issues is how this affects and becomes um uh. Relevant to the neighborhood and how it fits into the neighborhood. So let me just ask you a question. Um, first of all, on one of the pages that you submitted here. Uh, in the description of subarray one, I just wanna be clear. It talks about the area of the array is eighty feet, three inches by fourteen feet. Is that accurate? That's what I'm reading on one of the documents you submitted under areas. That, so it's fourteen feet uh wide and eighty feet, three inches long?
Sure, so um in terms of uh, you know, going back to our old. Uh, geometry days, right? Um, the uh, the thirteen, the thirteen feet.
Um, fourteen feet, sir, that's why I'm asking you.
Well, once, once, Laura, I'm looking at, one is saying. Laura, one end's got thirteen, ten inches and one it, one, one has fourteen inches, I mean fourteen feet. Um, and I, and I don't understand that particular the difference. Um, but that would um essentially be the running feet. Of the diagonal uh side. But from um, I believe, Laura, from a go go down to that measurement. This will, this will show you. Um, this on a triangular perspective. So we're looking at a hundred and sixty-eight inches and I'm just gonna. So the. Hypotenuse, I guess, is uh fourteen feet. Um, but the uh, the base of that would would be less. I think was is Laura, which you're referring to. The uh, the lesser dimension.
Well, let me just ask you that. We're talking about the um, the right angle of the triangle. There are two numbers for north clearance. One says ten feet, four inches. The other says eight feet, four inches. How, which one actually is gonna show from uh the ground as opposed to the base up to the apex? How many feet is that?
Laura, can you answer that question?
So this report is populated by the, the, the actual framing manufacturer. So from the ground up, it would be uh ten feet, four inches in total.
Okay, thank you. That answers that question. Has any thought been given to having instead of one long eighty-foot array? Having two forty-foot arrays, one in front of the other? I've noticed that there are, that there are other um homeowners that have set it up that way. Rather than one giant long one having two shorter arrays. Has any thought been given to that and why not?
So Laura, can you please go to the overall site plan?
The the first page, oh.
This one?
The site map with the um that we've been looking at with the array. Yes, that one.
So we we um, when we designed this, um, this system, right? The uh, the initial criteria was with the side yard setback for the, for the town. Right? Being the fifty foot. Um, and. There, um, I suppose there isn't anything, folks. Uh, that would preclude um us from breaking. uh, that would preclude, um, us from breaking that array. Laura, what is the distance that would have to between to the two arrays as not to have, um, shadowing between the, uh, between the arrays from the, the themselves?
You would have to have 16 feet in between the arrays from front to back.
So, I mean, it's possible, I suppose, folks, to say that we could push, um, the rear array to, you know, right to that 50 foot line. Um, but I'm not sure that the array, uh, in front, um,
Would be shaded by the residents.
No, I, I, I understand that, Tay. I guess I'm looking at it from a standpoint of if we offset them. I'm, I'm not sure, um, uh, I'm not sure what benefit would be achieved by, um, you, you know, at present time, the, the entirety is, um, designed to be out of view. I think that to break them up and put one in front of the other, in addition to having the inter row shading issue, um, you know, would, would just, um, um, I know, I know that one of the uh, desires of Dr. Zubari was to be able to have, um, a larger, more significant lawn area for his, you know, children to play in and, you know, perhaps, you know, um, you know, uh, putt a golf ball around, you know, with the nice manicured lawn.
So I also, sorry to interrupt, Chris. I just want to note that area to the left, that is where their septic is and their, their leach field. So we would not be able to install it and trench through that, through that area. So this was the, the optimal area.
So where exactly is the septic system in this? Uh, I don't see any of the diagrams showing the location of the septic. So for example, if you were gonna, um,
Laura, if you show me.
Part of my concern, sir, is, you know, I mean, I drove past this. It's in the front yard, the way you proposed it, and even being able to break it into two and moving it back slightly, that is towards the rear and splitting it into two would, in my view, at least take it out of the front yard. It would be lining up with the side yard, be a little bit more in the rear yard, but it would, there seems to be plenty of room for there to be a 16 foot, um, distance between it. And I'm just throwing this out as a question because of the que, of the impact that this might be having with an 80 foot long, um, array all in one row. Does that make sense? Are you able to?
No, I under, I, I, I understand and appreciate, um, I, I very much under, understand and appreciate your, uh, your thoughts. Um, Laura, can you do me a favor and just go to the one picture associated, uh, that is just so showing a bird's eye view of the property? Cause when I walked this with Dr. Zubari, uh, no, no, I apologize, Laura, not that. I'm just looking for the visual. It's like the very first one you have. That's just like a Google, Google Earth of the property.
The GP, the GIS picture that shows.
I think it is the cover page for the application, this one, I believe.
Yeah. So, um, so one of the things that, um, Dr. Zubari, you know, is asked me to help him out on is just the, uh, you know, almost like an expansive, like how do I, you know, how can we beautify this property? But, um, so Laura, if you were to take your cursor and right there, okay, go right there. And you, so at the, uh, back end of the house, on the other side, you see that like a little bright green area? Well, uh, right against the house, sweetheart. Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah. And now if you go directly left, I believe that you see some, uh, lighter grass areas with the dark. Right there? No, Laura, go, go back where you were, sweetheart.
Chris, we're not controlling the screen.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Right there. I believe that is, I believe that is what Dr. Zubari.
And for the record, we don't call our staff by pet names, just seeing it.
I apologize, folks. I thought I was, I was, I thought I was speaking to my niece.
Miss, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I did include the copy of the septic map from the Farmington Historic House, Historic shake Farmington Valley Health. I'm trying to.
Eric, could you show us where, where that is and which image? I have them all up on my screen, but.
So the only problem is that the septic map that is on file with the Farmington Valley Health District is prior to the subdivision um, of Northington Way. So here's the original property in its entirety. This is flipped the other way. So here's Talbot Notch. Along this property line is where Northington Way is. And then, so the, the house is 160 feet originally off that side property line. There's a 50 foot right away from Northington Way. There's the 50 foot side yard. So it brings us to about 60 feet from the house is where the array would be and the septic field is located back here.
Oh, okay.
And as I stated, it's, it, this is turned around. I want to turn around the whole document because it's all in one, but the, here's the garage. Um, the street, the brook is over here. And then again, here's the septic field.
All right. And Garrett, would you just, on this image, would you just use the cursor to show what area would have the septic system and leaching field?
Right about here.
All right. Does it go back as far as where the array, if the ray was to be moved to the west? Um, from its current location? Would it still allow, in other words, to the area beyond where the septic system is? Would it, and it would therefore be away from the front of the house?
I believe the problem is the trenching that, um, Taylor stated was that the trenching through the septic field is the, is the problem.
Can, can I, can I please, um, I don't want to interfere with anybody's, uh, comment, but can I please uh, add some information to that?
Of course.
Yeah. So that would not be a problem, right? So if, if, um, as the gentleman just said, that, um, if we were to move the array to the left, um, the, the, the trenching does not need to follow any particular path. Right? So, um, if, if it benefited the project and it benefited the acceptance of the project to move the array to the left, but behind this septic system, right? The trenching could take place completely to the right hand side of the array to the house, right? So that, that would not be like, uh, uh, that, that would not be an obstacle, um, you know, that would present any type of, uh, issue to the construction or, or the cost or anything else. It would, it would just simply, you know, be running, uh, the trenching, you know, 15 feet to the right as opposed to presently where it would be ideally located and that would be a hardship on us at all.
And, and I have one more question. Um, it, at least when I had my solar panels put on my property, there was a regulation that precluded putting in a ray larger than your current needs. In other words, they calculated your annual usage based on the annual, um, electric usage number of kilowatts rather than future needs and increase. Have they changed that rule? So you can have a larger, uh, you can have a larger production than you actually need at this time and sell more back to, uh, Eversource? And if that's the case, would one of the ways that you could resolve this issue is making a somewhat smaller array with a smaller number of panels and therefore also reduce the size of the footprint of this project?
So under the, the new program with the utility, that's correct. You cannot exceed your historical load. There are some additions, um, you can add kilowatt hours for future home improvements, like an air to air heat pump or an EV car charger. In Dr. Zubari's case, he is, this system is solely meeting his, his current usage that he uses.
21 kilowatts and.
He uses about 26,000 a year. So this system is, there, there will be no exporting. This is solely to service his residents.
All right. I understand. Thank you. I have no other questions. Thank you. Um, does anyone else wish to speak in favor? Uh, I just want to make sure. Are you done with your initial presentation? You will be given an opportunity to respond at the end, but are you done currently with your, um, presentation?
If, if you, if you're speaking to me, I, I believe, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll next turn to, uh, anyone who is present.
Mr. Chairman, can I just do a couple of things before we move on to public comment? Um, one, I just want to clarify what variance is being sought just for the public. I know it was in the report, but I just want to clarify why variance is being sought. After that, we did receive, um, letters. I'm just gonna, all of them except for one has been provided to the commission and posted to the website prior to this meeting. There was one that was received right at 4:30. So I didn't send it out to the commission and I did, and I, it was not posted to the website. I'll hold that. I'll show that one. That's a short one.
And I'll note that when we, because I went to planning and zoning commissions a couple of months ago and when there's people in the audience, they may have to leave. So we'll do that before we do written.
All right, that's fine. Nope.
Make note of that, just so that to accommodate people who came out tonight.
Then I, then I would request that we do, I'll explain what the variance is being sought for first.
Right.
I'll leave it up to you. You can do, I'm assuming based on what you just said, that you want to do in person first. Then we'll go online and I'll, when we go to that portion, I'll explain the process.
And I will also ask you to give input from the, the department on what your proposal and your ideas are.
Understood.
All right. So does anyone here first of all wants to speak in favor of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, can I just go first? I just wanted to explain what the variance is being sought for. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, um, the property to 27 Talbot Notch Road is a corner lot between the public road Talbot Notch Road and the private road Northington Way. The prop. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? Okay. Sorry about that. So the house 227 Talbot Notch Road is a corner lot between Talbot Notch Road, which is a public road and Northington Way, which is a private road. The property originally encompass, with the previous owners encompassed this whole property. Um, the property was subdivided. This lot number two shown on the screen was developed. Lot three and lot four were not developed yet. They could be developed in the future because it is an approved subdivision. So it's a, it's a, a private road, but we treat this lot 227 as a corner lot. Ground mounted solar arrays are allowed in accordance with the planning and zoning regulations. Um, they must comply to the, uh, rear and side yard setbacks for the zone they're in. Where as opposed to a shed, we can go five, we're allowed to go five feet off the property line. In the R80 zone, it's 40 feet for the side yard and 50 feet for the rear yard just shown here. Because this is a corner lot, we find the midpoint of all four property lines and draw a grid. And then that rear quadrant that's farthest from both roads is where sheds and pools and ground mounted solar rays would be allowed by right with, uh, uh, solar ray would still require site plan approval from the planning and zoning commission. The array is being sought here because it is outside of that, this box. Um, that's what, why a variance is being sought because it's outside of this small box. Um, as stated previously, there is a brook that runs along the property line. Um, so in order to get the.
That's on the southern.
Yes, I'm sorry. So north is, is down, south is up. Um, so the brook is shown here. Um, wetlands were mapped on the other properties that were part of the subdivision and there was some mapping done near the house. Um, but there was none shown on these property lines, so they didn't do any wetlands mapping at the time. The wetlands go up to the property line for 227 Talbot Notch from the property to the south. Um, so any tree removal is, assuming it would be significant for a solar array, would need to go to wetlands for approval. Given the proximity to the wetlands, it would probably not be a viable application, um, to remove all those trees, given the proximity to the wetlands that'd be necessary, um, to get the solar efficiency that was stated as part of the, uh, discussion earlier. And that's all I have.
Okay. And now I guess it would be.
Yeah, sorry.
Anyone here gonna raise their hand and they're gonna, I'm gonna ask them to come up to the podium, which to speak in favor of the application? I will do, I will note we got, uh, correspondence in favor. So, um, if there's no one here who's speaking in favor, I think that we should at least identify the letter, uh, that was sent in favor of the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the staff did receive a letter, um, in support of a solar, a ground mounted solar array, um, from a resident on Mountain Spring Road.
Could you just name the person?
Yes, I'm sorry. Margaret Piner and Oliver Totsman, 29 Mountain Spring Road, Farmington.
And it's dated?
I'm sorry. Uh, it was Sunday, September 17th, 2023, 7:54 PM.
Did we receive any other, uh, correspondence in favor of the applicant?
We didn't. Staff did not.
So anyone here which to speak opposed to the applicant? All right. We have a few hands, but this gentleman raised his hand. Would you please come up to the podium? You, sir. And yes. And, uh, you state your name and address.
My name's Ronald Faybush. I live at 241 Talbot Notch Road. I've been there for 24 years and before that I lived in a different house in Farmington for 24 years. So I'm kind of a newcomer to town in that regard. Uh, first I heard of this was when this showed up in my mailbox about two days ago. Uh, so I wasn't notified at the time. Uh, first thing I'd like to ask the town to do is to provide a shuttle bus for the people that live in the neighborhood to come to the meetings here. Because as I look around the room, I know a lot of the faces because we've been here on several issues in this neighborhood in the past few months, a primary one being right across the street from, uh, northern, Nor- Northington Way, is it? Uh, there's a development that got approved to put in five new houses on a lot that presently has one older house.
Before, let me interrupt you for a second. We cannot speak about other development. This is a.
I'm not speaking about other developments, but I'm talking about, I'm, I'm going to talk about the impact on me. So this is the impact on me. Uh, so a few weeks ago, that was approved. Uh, the big concern there was drainage. And had that meeting been on Thursday of this past week instead of a few weeks ago, it probably would have been shot down because the flooding we had, I had eight inches of water in my garage after the town spent a lot of money last summer to increase the size of the drainage. And I understand it rained a lot, but what they refer to as the hundred year floods are now coming about two or three times every summer. Uh, so I'm concerned about drainage in this area is going to be one concern. After the rain we had Wednesday, that property across the street washed down and went all the way down. You, you're the person who lives on Northington Way, right? Did you see a little bit of water down there on Wednesday? A little bit would be an understatement. Okay. I don't know what these people are thinking to put this in this neighborhood. Uh, there's a gentleman down the end there, Chris, who lived right across the street from me for quite a few years, a wonderful neighbor. He's probably happy he moved away now. He's, he's, he's laughing now that he sees what's going on in the neighborhood. Uh, this is crazy. This is the kind of thing you'd expect to see in a commercial area, not in an R80 residential. In a commercial area, not in an already residential area. Uh, I'm gonna joke for a moment and say that I just got off the phone with McDonald's today. Because if this is approved, I'm gonna be in here in a few weeks to put a McDonald's in my front yard. Uh, the only difference between that and this is instead of green fabric around it, it'll be yellow and red fabric. But that's as ridiculous as this is in terms of impact on the neighborhood. I put a hot tub in a few months ago. I got a permit for it. I had to go to the Farmington Valley Health District for approval to make sure it was away from my well and away from my. Uh, septic system, which it is. Uh, I had enough space to fit it where I wanted to. Uh, this fellow can't put this where he would like to, or I'm hoping he can't put it where he would like to. So he should put it where it belongs, just like I had to put my hat tub. Where it belongs. The same rules apply to me. And in terms of saying the fabric is going to prevent the view. I drive by this property on a slow day, five times on a busy day, maybe ten times. I live two houses away. Uh, after Northington Way, uh, Jack Stanfield's house. Is on Copper Beach Lane, but it really backs up to Talkeet Notch and then on the next property. And he's here, and so is Joe Cody is here. Uh, he lives right behind me. This is crazy to put this in this neighborhood. It makes no sense. Now, the road relative to this property is elevated. When you look at this property, sitting in my car, I'm looking over the roof of the house. So I don't know how much, there were some drawings that had the grid lines of elevations. And I don't remember for sure what the elevations are. But the trees that they showed in some of the views are gonna give some privacy to Northington Way. And there's very little traffic on that road because there's one house on that street. And between you and your wife, you probably drive up and down the driveway a couple of times a day. So those trees will benefit you a couple of times a day. I don't know what the traffic on Talkeet Notch Road is, but if I said five thousand cars a day, I'd probably be close. Uh, to reality, uh, it's a tremendous amount of traffic. And they're all gonna look down at this thing and say, what the hell is going on down there? This is a residential neighborhood. Who's spoiling it? Who's putting this in? Doesn't belong there. And they showed a couple of trees. On the east end, which would be the Talkeet Notch Road end of this array. And two of those are birch trees. Now, the birch trees that I had at my previous house had green things hanging on them called leaves. And they were there in the summer, but they were not there in the winter. In the winter, they were just stems. So there'll be no shading from the birch trees. In the winter months, only in the summer months. Uh, and as people drive by, even if you put some trees there, by the time they grow tall enough to block the view, considering that you're looking. Down the hill towards the array, uh, I'm not gonna be living there anymore. It's not because they plan to move. But I'm seventy eight years old. So if I'm lucky, I'll live as long as my mother did, another twenty years. And those trees in twenty years won't grow high enough to block the view. Of that. Uh, the only thing that made a little bit of sense was to block it into two sections of forty feet long. Put them one in front of the other, and then on this drawing, shift them to the left. But I wish I had a laser pointer, but I wouldn't shift them. Two inches to the left on this drawing, I'd shift them one foot to the left. Uh, by one foot, I mean on the drawing that's on the wall. I don't mean a scale. I shove away to the left, but not far enough to the left to interfere with the people that live down on the end of. Uh, the street. So those are my comments. This thing is completely out of place. I haven't met the gentleman that lives there, so this in no way reflects on him. But I have a sense that he's only lived there a few years. I think the house was sold a few years ago. Do we have any knowledge as to when the the property turned over?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen? Okay.
Sir, sir, we, the way we have, there's other people may want to speak, so we can't have people who aren't being picked up by the microphones.
I understand.
No questions.
That question was directed to, I guess you're the clerk of the group.
Uh, we're not the, we're not the town clerk's office, so we wouldn't necessarily know when the property was.
Does he live there three or four years? Is that fair to say? Okay, uh, he probably made a mistake by moving there if these are the kind of things he wanted to do. Uh, because this is completely unfounded. I'm gonna leave time for a lot. There's gonna be a lot of other speakers here today besides myself, so I'm gonna move on. Uh, but you know my opinion. This is crazy. Crazy. It's not as crazy as me putting a McDonald's in my front yard.
Thank you, sir.
That would be more crazy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
First off, sorry about answering. I thought it was just open to the public with my apologies.
Can't pick up mic. Uh, the microphones are very narrowly focused, so.
I got it. Thank you.
Get your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Gary Grzewinski and I live at nineteen Aqueduct, which is right on the corner of Aqueduct Lane and Talkeet Notch. So as my neighbor was just saying, I drive up and down Talkeet Notch quite a bit as well and to see these things, I'm not gonna have a circular conversation, but I agree with him. It's it's not the place. This environment, this area is not the place to put this solar array. It's always great to hear other people coming in who don't live in town, who aren't gonna have to look at this. You guys painted a a picture that is not necessarily the truth. First off, he's not a doctor. He's a nurse practitioner. He bought the house for four hundred thousand in twenty nineteen and he's saying he's on hardship? I don't get that part. All right. Second, you said it's a beautification project, but in reality, look at the neighborhood. It's wild. It's rural. We have bear, deer, bobcat, everything. And to have you come in and take down what you call dead trees, they're not dead trees. I live, like I said, through two houses down from him. They're not dead trees. I took pictures as you guys were cutting. They weren't. It's just this neighborhood is not the place to put this. This solar panel. It's not zoned for it. It it deserved, you know, it should be in a in a an industrial neighborhood, not not in in Talkeet Notch. I mean, we have two historic roads. Bordering Talkeet Notch. And we're going to be petitioning to get Talkeet Notch turned into a historic road as well, a scenic road. I just don't get where you guys are coming from. We're thinking that this is okay, but yet again. Chris lives up in Massachusetts.
You've got to direct your comments to the commission, not to the applicant, please.
Got it. Got it. All right. So anyways, the people live out of state and out of town. Who are developing and wanting to do this, and they're not gonna have to look at it. We are. The guy, the gentleman. Mohammed, that's his, that's his first name. Mohammed. First off, the 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 comment that he made about, our neighbor made about the birch trees is a hundred percent correct. He's got a lot of deciduous trees in his yard. Right? That's where the leaves fall. Non deciduous, he's got a row of maybe two and a half foot, three foot tall albervitae in the front where out of the eleven, three are dead. The property. You say it's a beautification project, but in reality, the yard doesn't, it doesn't look like it should be in the neighborhood to begin with. Right? That's just my opinion. But it's just, it's not the right place to put this this solar array. It's not the right thing to do. And sometimes doing the right thing is the hardest thing to do, but sometimes it's pretty obvious. So. Um. That dark nylon green material that he referenced, what impact is that gonna have on birds? Deer, bear, wild, you know, bobcat that may get caught in it. Sure, dark sounds great because it's gonna be hidden, right? Because of the dark adjective. But is it, is there any impact when it comes to wildlife and getting it trapped in it? My brother works with a DEEP and he has seen numerous solar panels go out through or get put up. Throughout the city of Connecticut. And I always asked him, like, hey, what's the biggest issue when it comes to solar panels? And you know, I'm talking to large farms, but it's not too far from what we experienced the other day with that heavy rain erosion, which went down into. My neighbor at uh, on on Northington Way. Right? Half of his, half of his beds got washed away by all that runoff. And second, there's no wildlife. There's no vegetation under those solar panels that are gonna grow to to catch that runoff of rain. Which means it's going downhill to his property again. So anyways, that's um. I think that's it. That's all that I've got. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, I realized, um, if any of the commissioners had any questions of those that are speaking, they should raise their hand. I don't wanna. Deprive anyone on this commission of asking question. That includes you, Mr. Healy, if you have any questions. Sounds like he doesn't. Okay.
Sorry, there was just a a part two. Um, I applied for a permit to get a barn put on my property. Um, and the zoning commission, actually the the people who were doing the permit denied me because they said it was gonna be.
This is the zoning board of appeals, so you should.
Long story short.
Questions with that board, they're different.
No, no, my my question isn't with them, but my my, I was denied because he said it was, it wasn't gonna be aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. A barn in a country environment. And what are they doing? What are they proposing? Something that belongs in industrial facility, not ours. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's uh, JR Code. I live at seven Copper Beach Lane. Uh, I had a question. Can they pull a previous photograph up that I can make a comment to? Is that allowed or?
If you'd like to, sure, we'll.
The 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 first photograph of the hand drawn pictures? Right, right there. So. My understanding is this is gonna sit ten feet, four inches off the ground. That the topo from the house to Northington Way is relatively flat. So the ceilings in this room are probably not even at ten feet. Pretty safe to say. The bushes that he has drawn in, maybe when they plant them are at four feet. The bottom line is the tops of those trees don't even go above the foundation of the home. Ten feet four would be above the brick line of that house. So the photograph, I mean, it it's it's hand drawn. It's it's pure fantasy. There's there's no reality related to this and I just. I I don't understand why in today's day and age, uh, a photograph with an iPhone or a camera wouldn't have been taken and simply. Take the. Uh. Take the mechanism and superimpose it into the into the picture because this is nowhere near accurate. Not at all. Uh, that would that would be, it would literally be sitting above that brick line right there. So I mean, if someone has to give me some crayons and a piece of paper, I can draw something right now real quick and put it together, but this isn't, I you know, I'm not against. Green or or anything. I I think it's the wave of the future. I think electric cars are coming and they're gonna be here soon. Um, I don't know. I haven't heard anything about anyone putting these on the roof of the house. That was never explored. So I don't know if that's an option or not, but I just, I don't think this belongs where they have it set. At this property where people have to go buy a Talkeet Notch every day and drive by it. It's just, it's the wrong neighborhood for it. And I don't wanna repeat what Gary said. Um, if it were pushed down further towards Northington, I guess that takes it further away from the street, but that may impact Pete who owns the house down there. So. But I I I find the hand drawn pictures as well. I mean, very artistic, they're well done, but. I just don't understand why real photographs weren't taken and they just simulated the the product in here because. These photographs, I unless someone can tell me otherwise, I just don't see how they're even close to realistic.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, you raised your hand. You want to speak, please?
Okay, uh, my name is Jack Stanland. Uh. I live on Copper Beach Lane, but my property in the back goes up to Talkeet Notch uh. Road and from my property, I have a direct view across Northington Way. Uh, to where the proposed solar array is going. And I I share some of the comments that were made earlier. And that I have a lot of trouble with the reality of that sketch. Um, it it you're, you have an an array that's eighty feet long. Fourteen feet on the hypotenuse and ten and a half feet high. That's that's pretty darn big. Um, it it reminds me of what we see when we drive along the Mass Pike. Uh, but that's okay. That's a commercial area. We don't care. In this area, it's totally inappropriate. And I know from where I am and my, I have a direct view of it. Uh, I'm going to see that array and it's. Going to just be hideous. Um, and it and it seems like it's it's overly large. For what is needed and um. And why some of the trees in the back couldn't be removed so it could be put on the roof. Um, I'm not sure. It sounds like they approached it and said, well. That's a little more difficult to do. Let's put it on this uh, on the property. And if I understand what I was hearing a bit, um. They might need a little bit of a variance to be able to put something of that size in. Is that correct?
That's their application is calling for a variance to place this uh, array in a portion of the property where it would not be permitted. Under current zoning regulations unless we approve a variance.
Okay, that that's what I thought, that it's, it would be nonconforming in that sense. So. When you add that in to the basically hideous nature of it. And the fact that it's going to be an eyesore and and I I share the other comments, though. The birch trees, anything deciduous is uh, going to provide nothing. And I didn't see in the sketches that the evergreens went all the way eighty feet. Went fourteen feet over and came up another eighty feet and fourteen feet along the front. That's a lot of evergreens. And if you're going to put in uh, ten foot ones to to block anything. You're still gonna see it from Talkeet Notch Road because you're up higher and you're looking down. So I I I think in the sketches that were done. I I share uh, Mr. Cody's comments that I can do that sort of thing and make it look good. The reality is that you you need professional drawings in order to demonstrate it, but. Um, I I just think it's totally inappropriate. On the uh, Mass Pike, it's okay. On the our perfectly residential area. That has very nice characteristics and the same with all of Farmington. If it's, this can go on Talkeet Notch Road. What will we have in other sections of Farmington and after a while that. The whole town will look terrible. It it won't have the aesthetics that it has now. So I'm I'm very, very opposed to it. Uh, and I hope you you will consider the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of this gentleman? Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the applicant? No one's raising their hand, but Garrett, would you just, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address the record.
Um, hi, my name's Peter Coyne. I live at two Northington Way, um, Farmington. Uh, first off, thank you for your service and thank you for your patience with uh, all the questions. Um, I think my wife is online. Unfortunately, she can't be here tonight. We have three young boys. Um, and they have a commitment tonight, so she's there. Um, so I'm here representing our family. Uh, personally and then professionally for work, I lead a business that serves uh, the roofing market and we actually sell. Uh, solar products to the solar industry. Um. As a family, we're supportive of renewable energy. We think there is probably a better alternative here. Um. You know, for us, we're opposed to the proposed plan for uh, for three principal reasons, and I think some of those are consistent with what we heard. Uh, one, I would say the aesthetics and the aesthetic impact to our family. Uh, there's actually three lots on Northington Way, so there's the home that we live in and two empty lots. And then as um, uh, gentlemen referenced earlier, there are six lots directly across the street. So really the. There will be a road eventually when that construction is done and there'll be collectively seven uh, homes that have not been built. Um, so I would say the aesthetics, the uh, environmental impact and then also uh, property values. So the aesthetic impact. I I think it's been said, we chose to live in farming from, it's a beautiful community. I think the the town green is just gorgeous. There's a lot of green space. Um, the wildlife is amazing. Um, bears, um, bobcats, coyotes. Um, and it's just, it's it's idyllic and uh, something that uh, we fell in love with. I think the proposed ten foot solar array um, would adversely impact the aesthetics of our. Our property and I think the property values. Um, second, the property values, um, you know, we bought our home. It was this idyllic drive down the road. And uh, kind of this farm uh, or semi rural setting. I think with a solar array that would impact our property values as well as those around us. So I think it would impact. Our family, it would impact our neighbors, and I think it would also impact the tax revenue of the town. Um, if that were to occur. And then finally, the uh, environmental impact, I think it was stated by Gary. And then finally, the, uh, environmental impact, I think it was stated by Gary. Um, you know, ground mounted solar creates new infrastructure, which, uh, doesn't have developed land and it creates runoff. And then I think second, in order to develop or, or build these trees around a ten foot array. It would have to be pretty far off because by definition, this solar would block the light necessary for anything to grow. Um, and then finally, in closing, you know, I, I, I think, uh, there is an alternative here. I think number one, if you go back to the G I S, you know, that where, um, you know, Garrett, you had shared where it's planned. The, uh, there aren't wetlands where the, uh, where it's approved in that southwest quadrant. And they could take some trees down or else have a, you know, it might be sub-perfect in terms of how much solar energy they generate. But at least they would be generating some solar energy and, and there are no wetlands in that quadrant and that bottom southwest corner. And then I think the other alternative is, uh, rooftop solar. So there are solar arrays you can mount on an existing roof to generate energy. It doesn't create any infrastructure. It doesn't displace the environment. And then there's also another alternative, which is, uh, Timberline Solar, which is manufactured by G A F. And it's basically solar that's in your, uh, shingles and you could put that on the front and the back of the roof. And I, I haven't done a study on the house, but I would imagine it would generate a significant amount of energy. So, um, you know, thank you for your service and, uh, yeah, wanted to share our, our family's feelings. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? I, I just have, I have one though. Um, are you suggesting that if they put this array? In the, in the, uh, approved part of the lot, that you wouldn't have any objection to that? Even though that puts it closer to your house?
Well, I, I prefer them not to have it in the yard.
But you understand, we could not, we have no say.
Well, I understand you can't, I mean, I think it's, I think if, if they wanted to do it, they could do it in that area.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Is that, that's the question you asked?
Yes, it is.
But I, 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 you know, as a, somebody who works in the industry. I think the better alternative for the environment and the community is rooftop solar. And I think the other piece that I, you know, now that thinking about your question is, when you have rooftop solutions versus ground mounted. Ground mounted solar, you could have issues where like the mesh doesn't protect the, uh, environment. You could have wires that get loose and, you know, I think about my kids. I have curious three little boys. Who get into all sorts of stuff in the garage and, you know, there could be an issue. And, you know, uh, there's kids in the community, the Codies have kids. And you could have a fatality if somebody were to touch something that's, you know, not protected or grounded properly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
Yes, but I'm just gonna, I just wanna go through the process before we, so I do see a couple of hands raised. So, um, if anyone that is attending online that wants to speak for or against the application, please use the raise hand function. Um, and then I will call on you in order that you appear. Um, first up is Deborah Bra- uh, Brahm, I'm sorry. Um, Deborah, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak. And I would just ask that once, uh, you're done, everyone is done speaking, um, that you mute yourself again. Thank you. All right, Deborah.
Hi, my name's Deborah Brahm. I live at one thirty-one Mountain Spring Road. I do not support the project in the side yard. Um, I think the hand drawn landscaping proposal was very optimistic. I planted twenty-five, um, evergreen trees in my yard for a visual screening. By a professional landscaping store. And it's gonna take years for them to grow, even with a watering system. Um, so I think the drawings were very optimistic. And I think the side yard project location isn't a viable option. Um, I think it's gonna be a visual detractor from drivers on Talcat Road. I think it's gonna be distracting. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Brahm? No. All right. All right, Garrett, is there someone else?
Again, if there's, hold on, yes, hold on one second. Kerry Coyne, you should be allowed to speak now. Just unmute your microphone.
Thank you, Garrett. Do you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I echo the thanks to each of you. You all are tireless on this committee, um, supporting our community. And our, the growth and smart growth, um, of all that we want to accomplish in our town. So thank you again for your service. Um, there's a lot that's being said, um, repeatedly, and I don't want to count on that. I didn't say I live at, um, two Northington Way. So that is our road, um, that you see adjacent, um, and in parallel. To the eighty foot stretch of proposed solar panels. Um, we also own the two lots that are, are eighty zoned for development when, and if we choose, um, on that private road as well. So it's three lots really that we have potentially being affected, um, by this, uh, construct of the solar array as proposed. Um, more than anything, I mean, I guess I would say my issues echo those. I won't go into the details because you heard a lot, but certainly property values. Um, being the biggest, um, and most close to home, and largely that is a function of aesthetics, which would, I think, affect many. Um, thousands of people who drive by every day, but certainly us who go up and down that driveway, right? Adjacent to the backside of, um, eighty feet of solar panel and all the machinery required to operate it. Um, and then finally ecological, um, some of us have heard, I guess we've heard from a few people tonight about each ecological impacts. That's a common, um, concern with ground mounted solar. And we saw it firsthand, um, in massive, massive runoff. That created a like six hundred square foot mud pond in our front yard that sent a ton of the clay. Um, at the dig site last week down into the wetlands, um, and removed all of the mold for our landscaped area. That's adjacent to this, this dig site. And that was after three consecutive days of requesting, um, the homeowner and the, um, um. Uh, solar company and work crew to protect, uh, the runoff because we had runoff last Monday as well. And didn't want it to get worse when the rains came Wednesday, which it did get much, much worse. We actually still have mud in our yard from that. Um, so those are my three top concerns. Um, and I have a lot of details that I can use to support those. But most of all, I want to use this time to, to correct some what seemed to be misunderstandings and misstatements. Um, both tonight and on a little bit on the documentation, we've heard a good deal from several. Um, I think Gary, Jack and, uh, J R all spoke to the scale and perspective, um, misleading on the paintings. Um, my first degree is in architecture. I could spend a lot of time dealing with drawings in CAD and lifelike representations. And yes, I like, I like the language that, um, I think it was J R who called it pure fantasy paintings. We spent a lot of time with those images on our screen and they are not reflective of what it would look like. Um, driving down Northington Way or driving down Talcat Notch. And a lot has been said. I think Jack used some nice geometry to explain that. Um, but ten foot, five, ten foot, four inch tall solar panels with nylon backing. Um, who knows how long that will stick. I've done research on this company and every site and sub-site on their webpage. I've never seen anything about nylon backing. I've not, um, seen any pictures or any reference to it. It sounds like maybe it's some sort of prototype. Kudos for trying to make it blend into the background. But at ten feet, four inches nylon backing of something that's not, uh, made to do that, I don't have a lot of confidence. Um, some have mentioned the arbovita row that has been planted in the front of this two-two-seven Talcat Notch property. It's, um, dwindling, it's deer eaten, it's dying, it's not looking good. I don't have a lot of confidence of the upkeep of lots of twelve foot tall spruces and fir trees going all around eighty feet long and fourteen feet. Um, broad solar array, um, within feet of the landscaping. It's fif- it's fifty feet from our driveway as proposed. It's about half as far from the edge of our landscaping. Um, so that is of concern. Secondarily, I heard, um, I think it was Taylor from, is it Iron Ridge mentioned upfront? No, um, landscaping was destroyed. We know a large lot was cleared. Clay from uphill was dumped in it. And that's a lot of what ran down into our road, into our, um, our driveway, our yard and our wetlands last week with the big rains. But there was an entire row of privet hedge that was built, it was, it was, um, it was, uh, landscaping that was put in place for privacy. Almost, uh, twenty years ago. So fifteen to twenty year old privet hedge was taken out along with the quote dead trees and also living trees. Um, lots of great wildlife has moved into our property as we all know when we clear land, that's what happens. And that's the homeowner's right to do. But I just wanted to correct the misunderstanding. There was, uh, landscaping destroyed. There was a private hedge that ran, um, the majority of that eighty feet that was taken out right at our gas line. Third, and I think Pete mentions this, Pete pulling a few minutes ago, um, the wetlands that were referenced in the hardship. Those are in a different quadrant of what is designated for something like a solar array to be built. Um, per our town's guidelines, um, the southwest corner of this property is where the solar array should be built. And hence they're proposing, uh, you know, the zone, we're having the zoning conversation tonight because they're proposing a change. The wetlands are on the neighbor's property. The creek is on the neighbor's property. This is, I believe, at two-one-seven Talcat Notch, um, the southbound neighbor. And in terms of not being able to take down trees near the wetlands, the southwest corner. And certainly the midpoint of that where the most sun would come in the direct midpoint of the, pretty much close to the, the homeowner's backyard. Is well beyond a hundred and fifty feet from those wetlands in the very front part, um, of the, I guess that would be the, that's that northwest corner. Um, of the property at two-two-seven. So that, I think, um, is not a hardship. I think very, um, likely this, this, whether one or two rows of array could go right in the homeowner's backyard. I'm sure they don't want that because as Chris, um, the salesman with Iron Ridge Solar said, the homeowners want their kids to be able to play in the backyard. And I get that. We have kids too. We have kids and a dog playing in our yard every single day. And I understand how unpleasant it would be to have your backyard consumed, um, with a large solar array or two. Um, but there is a great deal of linear feet depth of trees that could be taken down, not near the wetlands to provide more light if needed. Um, or not at all. We have, you know, our property is directly south of this property. And we get a ton of sunlight directly south of the midpoint of their, um, the, the mid, the quadrant. The southwest for the southwest quadrant where this would go. In fact, my husband and I were spending, we spent a lot of time this weekend reseeding. Because we had lots of, uh, dying grass because we had so much sun in that very, um, north, south line. Of where, um, the middle of this quadrant would go. When you look at the quadrants of the, you know, from the northern and southernmost midpoints. And then the east-west midpoints of this property, and look at that southwest quadrant, it gets plenty of sun. And if they want more, they have trees, they can take down the, not near wetlands. Um, I'm on, I'm on the mic, bud. Sorry, I'm picking up my kids in practice. Um, fourth, um, I'm concerned that some of these facts seem a little bit wobbly. For the longest time, well, not that long because I haven't known about this issue, uh, for that long. Because the, the sign for the zoning meeting was sort of hidden between a couple other signs. And as some others mentioned, we had a little bit of exposure, um. Fatigue and signs for zoning meetings in this area, given the months, many months, um, of the zoning meetings across the street. Um, but a ten foot four we're hearing now is the height off ground. Um, it was eight foot four in the documents and I did double check that, um, that were posted initially online. That was before Friday. I don't know if they changed, um, but midweek last week, it was eight foot four off ground height. Now it's ten foot four off ground height. Um, it sounded like Chris was really unsure of a lot of the facts. Um, it makes me be very nervous to think that we're going to be voting on something that I'm not really confident with all these concerns. That's not, not quite accurate from what I've seen and what I've heard. Um, I want to make sure that we all are hearing that some of these facts are moving around a little bit. Um, and finally, I just want to say, um, all of the maps, the topo maps, the satellite maps, the, um, property maps. None of those, I think there are at least three and I believe four, including the documents, none of them showed our home. And I know, we all know it's there. We live at the bottom of Northington Way. But it just feels like, you know, if there are neighbors, we're right there. We go up and down that street a dozen times a day. Whether walking the dog or driving in and out between my husband and me and all the things, um, our kids do. But it is, um, eighty feet of the back of a solar panel lined with blue or green nylon with baby trees. The deer, they're gonna eat and will need irrigation and who knows what else. I don't have confidence that this is going to be a palatable solution, certainly not for us. And as many have said, in such a scenic area, I mean, we're a half mile from Old Mountain Road, a half mile from Mountain Spring Road, both of which are designated scenic drives. It just feels like the wrong place for this. Um, understand the homeowners have the right to put this in their backyard. And we applaud anyone who is seeking green energy and any renewable resources. I come from a family, my father's in power all his life. He led hydro, he led solar, he led wind. Um, really forced the development that where we lived before it was even a thing. I am a huge advocate. But putting it on a scenic road in everyone's purview and eighty feet along our driveway within, you know. Twenty feet of landscaping just is not, um, is not a good solution. Roof, roof mount, fantastic, ground mount in the back. I understand that you can get some more power potentially from that if you don't want to go the shingles option. But there are other options that don't create such pain for the homeowners nearby and the passersby. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'll just note in our packet, we do have a GPS, um, uh, satellite view that does show your property. Um, it's the image just after the one showing the site plan that, that's was up there. Yeah, it's now up on the screen. Is there anyone else, uh, Garrett? Excuse me, who, um, who wishes to speak either in favor or opposed to this application?
If there's anyone present online that would like to speak for or against the application, please use the raise your hand function. Again, if there's anyone present online that would like to speak for or against this application, please use the raise hand function. Mister Chairman, I see no additional hands raised.
So if you would just identify what other correspondence we've received, just by the name of the person, maybe their address and the date. And whether they're in favor or opposed, please.
Yes, so we already did the, uh, in favor before we move to, um, the online section for public comment. So I have, um, uh, I think it's six letters in opposition that, uh, staff received. Um, first is from J R Cody at, uh, seven Copper Beach Lane. Um, it was received, uh, this morning, Monday, September eighteenth at eight twenty-nine A M, um, in opposition. Um, second was received from Jessica and Stephen Davis, two sixty-seven Talcat Notch Road. Um, and was received on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, opposition and concerns with wildlife. Uh, next one is from, uh, Helen Allison Granger, one eighty-seven and one ninety-nine Mountain Spring Road, uh, in opposition. It was received Monday, September eighteenth. Um, oh, forgive me, uh, Jim McLaughlin, one eighty-one Talcat Notch Road. Um, received Monday, September eighteenth at new, at, uh, twelve oh nine P M, uh, in opposition. Uh, letter from Kerry Coyne, uh, to Northington Way, uh, in opposition. And the last one was received, uh, this evening at four fifty-two, um, from John Sinise at, uh. Across the street, if you give me one second to, you didn't put his address in the email, two-two-two Talcat Notch Road, uh, in opposition. Um, that it should be moved to the rear of the house or provides substantial vegetated screening, so it's not visible from the road. Again, I, I read, uh, summarized that one because it was received, uh, too late to be posted on the website or shared with the commission prior to the meeting. And that is all the letters we received.
Thank you. So, um, I'll just, I'll give the applicant a chance if they wish to respond to any of the comments. They're not required to, but I have, I will give you that opportunity. If anybody from the applicant wishes to, uh, address any of the concerns that were raised. I'm not, not hearing any.
Hold on, hold on, uh, Mister Chairman, hold on. Chris, try speaking again.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Um, but thank, thank everybody for their time. Um, I obviously understand that this is, uh, a subject matter that, um. Uh, you know, is either, uh, looked at positively or, or not looked at in a positive favor at all. Um, I will say that there is like literally no intention to detract. From anybody's view, anybody's property value of any, uh, sort or nature. Um, you know, I, I take and I, I think I speak for Mohammed. Uh, I take the, uh, comments as being constructive criticism. And, and we'll, uh, as they say, we'll go back to the drawing board and see if we can, uh. Uh, provide something that is more palatable. Um, should you find in the favor that, uh, this does not warrant having, uh, an exemption. So, but thank everybody for their time.
Um, are you, um, asking to withdraw the application without prejudice at this time? Is that what you're, or, or you expect, or do you want us to, um, deliberate and, and vote?
No, I would like you to deliberate and vote for, for certain. I think that's part of the process. Um, but I, I just wanted to mention that I took everybody's comments as being constructive.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, um, the, I'm now gonna close the hearing, the public portion of the hearing. And I'll entertain a motion with regard to this application. I will recall, I will, uh, reme- I will recall, I will remind the, the commissioners that the motion has to be in the affirmative.
So noting that the motion has to be in the language of the affirmative. I move to approve the application of Green Earth Roofing Solutions LLC for a variance to locate a ground-mounted solar array in other than the required yard for a corner lot for property located at two twenty-seven Talbot Notch Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, I guess we'll go in, in order from left to right here. So I'll start with you, Commissioner Walsh.
No, no comments.
Commissioner Nadine?
Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion and I appreciate all the comments from the community. As I noted in the discussion earlier, we are required by statute to find a hardship when we grant a variance and I do not see a hardship here. Economic hardship does not qualify as one. Additionally, I know there was discussion that potentially some of the trees are in a wetland area, but it does not appear that that option has been fully, you know, pursued. We weren't presented with information that the homeowner looked into cutting down those trees and was told that he's not able to do so. Additionally, there appear to be other viable options, including having it be an accessory structure in other areas on the lot or on the roof of the home, just because putting it on the roof of the home may not give the homeowner as much solar energy. In my opinion, does not qualify as a hardship.
Mr. Callahan, is your motion?
Yes, I made the motion in the language of the affirmative as required by the rules, but I've got some real concerns about two things, hardship and it's too big.
Commissioner Cloud?
I forget who said it. It may have been Chris, the architect. I think it's time to go back to the drawing board. I think there are plenty of other options to be considered that should be vetted properly and they can bring this issue back to the table at a later date, but I would not be in favor.
Right. So I, as, as the chair, I'll just close by saying that although I am generally supportive of all's green energy projects, I have always supported in the past, any of the solar arrays that have come before this, this commission. However, I believe that the, in this particular case, the applicant has not shown sufficient hardship for the proposal that has been made. That is, no consideration has been given that I can see to splitting this up into two arrays, one perhaps on the roof, a smaller array that does have sufficient sun and then a smaller array that's tucked in behind the house may even be within the, the scope of the approved area where it would be permitted. But even if it had to be in this quadrant, a smaller array, maybe forty-foot array closer to the home, away from the neighbor's property and also away from the street would, in my opinion, be a better use and a better application. So I'm also going to vote against this particular application with the understanding that I think with a different plan, there would be approval by, by this commission now or, or in, in the future with a new plan after they go back, as Commissioner Cloud put it, to the drawing board. All right. So I think at this point we'll take a vote and Commissioner, Mr. Daigle, would you call the roll?
I was just gonna offer that. Commissioner Walsh?
No.
Commissioner Nadine? Commissioner Cloud?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
No.
Chairman Shawne?
No.
With a votes of, vote count of zero to five, the motion fails and the variance is denied.
So our next matter is the Barry Hannanbaum application for variance to locate a detached garage in other than required yard at ninety-six Farmington Avenue, R nine O G Zone. Could we have the applicant come forward?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to just wait a couple of minutes for the room to clear out? Do we want to just wait a couple of minutes for the room to clear? Thank you.
Oh, we've been requested to have.
Yeah, just make a motion for a recess.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think we're gonna make it.
I think that's the most controversial.
Excuse me, Garrett?
Yes, John?
I just want to be clear. Was the reason why I wasn't included in that vote because I'm not present or because an alternate was not needed?
The alternate was not. You weren't present.
That's conflicting.
They could have had an alternate.
Right, but we had a quorum without an alternate.
Right. Yes. Yeah. So John, the issue is that it's my understanding that when it's a hybrid meeting, all the commissioners have to be present unless accommodation are made for health reasons, which is, but I turn, but that, that's my understanding.
Is it material?
It's, well, he wants to know why he couldn't vote.
I'll, I'll check with the town attorney before our next meeting.
Yeah, sorry, John.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Right. So we could, because Ron well was. I didn't want there to be any question.
John wasn't appointed.
Right, because he's not here. Right. I didn't want there to be. Labor's credit, they'll see that. See them, that would be pronounced to John.
Right, and I don't.
I hasn't.
Yeah. Well, because it would seem that it would, if you have to care for your kids.
That should be enough.
Right.
That, that's why the vote went to John. And there's one empty, there's one vacancy. I can, I can chuck all I have to do is yell into the office, next story, that's fine.
Well, I know, I know, I know. We, I know we go in order.
What's interesting about this, the gentleman went to the planning. I've gotten my. We wanted to have those cover shows every Sunday morning. And there were eighty people. That showed up against it. The people wanted to speak. It was the last item on the agenda. It was like signs and putting in new illuminated signs or putting in chicken poops and stuff like that. And then at like eleven thirty, they got to that.
Especially else that stayed. You know, giving credit for staying that long.
Oh, and that's right.
But is it the same thing or do they have something?
We're back in session. So would you please identify yourself for the record and state your address for the record?
I'm Barry Hannanbaum. I'm the owner of ninety-six Farmington Avenue in Farmington.
All right, please, you know, we've received your application, but anything you wanted to add to that? And some of us have driven by your property, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I've been plagued with, with my basement flooding quite severely over the past, it's been like twenty years now. The water just keeps getting deeper and deeper. My house is on a corner of Farmington Avenue and Beet Street. My driveway is underneath the house, so it's below the street level. So when it rains, the runoff comes from behind the backyards. It comes down from the fire station, which is four houses away, Oakland Gardens Fire Department. It comes from back there. There's a swale and the water runs down through my backyard and then it goes, it exits onto Beet Street. And then it goes down Beet Street, but when it backs up on Beet Street, the, the lowest point on Beet Street unfortunately is my basement. So I've had massive amount of flooding. This was last week's. I didn't submit it, but I sent, I sent along other photos. But this is just last week's. I go, I had to leave work early to, I'd take a half a day off to come home and squeegee the mud and pump the water out of the basement. And as you could see, by the time I got there, it was already down about six inches below my garage door. So I get, I get anywheres from, I'd say eight to sixteen inches. I've had years where I had to put a new boiler in my, a new furnace in my house. I had to have the contractor put it up on, he, he set it on one row of cinder blocks, but he had to raise it another one. So I had to get it, I have to keep it sixteen inches above the floor to, to just accommodate the water that flows in there. I have two sun pumps. And when the, I have them both piped out, I, I put a trough in, in front of my garage door, eight feet wide, a foot deep and a foot, just like you would see with a grating on it. So you run over it every day with the car, but just to get the water coming in the garage, but the sheer volume of water kicks out the bottom panel of my garage door. I'm on my third garage door there because the bottom panel keeps bowling and bending, bending in and stripping the, the bolts out of the, the frame. And the, I have one sun pump there, then I have another sun pump about twelve feet away and the other side of the furnaces. The sheer, and I have a third one, a third pump I keep loose so I could drop it in the driveway and pump the water out onto the street. But some days, like last Wednesday or last week when it flooded, there was no place to put the water because it was just all in the street and all in my driveway in my basement. And then, and it's just been every time and every time it goes, my, my house is, my, I don't know exactly the square footage of my basement, but I gotta say it's probably eighteen hundred, seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet. The fire department has told me over the years, when, when I've called them to come help me pump it out, they've said I must have six thousand gallons of water down there. It is just a nightmare. And this has been going on forever, for twenty years. And I, I got the town's attention a few years ago. I started calling the town because I was, I'm just desperate for help here. And the town actually was, Farmington was great. They, they came over, they looked at it, they would sit out there when it would rain to watch where the water would come from. And then ultimately what they did was, they, I, I they put new, up new pipe in, they went behind my yard, the next house and the third house, and they put in piping all the way along the property line out to Beet Street with catch basin on Beet Street. They put in a new one and they put one in on in the backyard of the third house down, which is two away from the fire station. And didn't, it, it flooded again. So I'm no farther along than where I was, you know, five years ago, ten years ago. So what I want to do is I want to take the wall down and I have cinder block walls here going to my garage. I want to take it down, lock in the garage door altogether, fill that whole area with soil, so it's ground level with the front yard and backyard. And then I'm going to put a garage detached just, just behind there, about, I guess about twenty feet from where I am now from my garage, where it is now. And then I'll be mirroring directly across the street, there's also a two-car garage that they have at ninety Farmington Avenue. So I'll just be mirroring them, but I mean, it's just been a nightmare. I can't tell you. I bought a brand new gas hot water heater. And the contractor, when the plumber put it in, he put it up on eight-inch blocks. I said, did you put it up on blocks? Yeah, I put up blocks. Sure enough, you know, within eight months, ten months, the thing got submerged in water and I had to get rid of it. I mean, this is just endless. I had a rec room down there at one time with an office. I had to rip it all out, get a dumpster, throw it all away. So I'm here because I'm, I'm really desperate at this point. I don't know what else I could do.
Mr. Chairman, could I have some additional information?
Yes.
To help out Mr. Handbrake?
It's a corner lot.
Yes, yeah. So some, sort of similar to the previous application where it's a corner lot. It's a, it's a detached accessory structure, so it can be five feet off the property lines. But you have the same thing. We have a corner with Beet Street and a corner with Farmington Avenue. We make our, our quadrant, the back quadrant is where the garage can go. With the addition of the drainage swale and easement and pipe along back property line, the normal twenty-five-foot rear yard for and it, for the home is taken up by that. So no, no structures can go in there. So that pushes the garage to be closer to the home. With the normal zoning requirement, this, this garage would have to be pushed further back to this quadrant and essentially having to pave almost the whole usable backyard in order to have the driveway to, to the garage. So Mr. Hindman's proposing to place it in line with the existing wall of the house. It's proposed closer to Beet Street. It'll still be twenty feet off the property line, which the current home is, so it won't go beyond, it won't be any closer to Beet Street than the current home. It's proposed to be six feet off the back of the house. There's a sunroom at the back of the house that Mr. Hindman would like to preserve by detaching the garage. So it'll be six feet off the existing house. But aside from that, if, if the garage was attached to the house, it would meet the zoning requirements for an attached structure for a primary house. So it's, it's more of just allowing this outside of the required yard. But if we're attached, it would, it would, it would even come to, it would just be, be a building permit. It's a two-car garage. Mr. Hindman provided plans. It's a twenty-four wide by twenty-two deep, so twenty-four on Beet Street, twenty-two against the house. I don't have the height on here, but it's a, it's a simple, simple shed style garage without a high roof. So it's a fairly standard design, which is, it's, it matches the existing house.
It looks like the apex is fifteen feet, but that the, what is it, the average?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. So the maximum permitted height per the zoning regulations is fifteen feet and we measure that the midpoint between the peak and the eve. So really the, this is probably closer to we'll say twelve, twelve feet, twelve and a half feet without doing all the measurements. And that's the, the maximum height that we, that the town would consider. So if you have a gambrel roof, you can go higher. We've seen that in the past, you know, more like a barn style, but this is like a shed roof style.
And the front of the garage will be flush with the side of the house.
Correct.
All right. Is there anything else that the applicant would have to do to look, to physically seal up the garage, make that a wall and fill that in? Does he have to go to any other or need any other approval for that?
Not with the town, aside from, he'd have to apply for a, a building permit for the driveway. It's called the dry, it's a curb cut permit. It's, it's really for the work within the right of way, making sure that that's the town standards. So he'd, he'd apply for that, but aside from that, it'd be just a building permit to to block off the existing garage, remove those concrete walls and, and backfill and to grade the water away from the house. Mr. Hindman did provide instant pictures of all the flooding that he's had in the basement. And then staff did provide some pictures as well from Beet Street.
Can you enlarge that one?
Yeah, sorry. So here's the existing home. Here's the backyard where I'm, I'm standing on Beet Street. Here's the existing garage. So the, there's a catch basin here, there's a catch basin farther up, but they still don't do much to help mitigate the water that's coming down Beet Street. So he's looking to remove the walls, block in this, backfill soil to match the existing grade and slope it towards the road as needed. So this is another picture. This is about where the area of the garage would be. The oak tree would need to be taken down for excavating out for the, for the foundation. It would kill the roots, so the tree would have to come down anyway. And then here's the swale, the pipe. You can see it's a newer catch basin here. The pipe runs that way, behind the properties and discharges closer to the former East Farms Firehouse. I think, I think so. The one that by UConn that's no longer utilized for the fire department.
Oakland, yeah.
The Oakland Garden.
Oakland Gardens Fire.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hasn't been along that at all.
Yeah. Is there anything else, Mr. Hannanbaum, you wanted to add or is that it?
No, I just want to, I just, I do want to say one thing. Actually, I looked back at my old notes and I had a correspondence going with Director of Public Works, Russ Arnold, and he had said to me, this is back in twenty twenty-one, he said, this was, this is the reminder I got. This is the first information I got. He said, your retaining laws, retaining walls along the sides of driveway to the drive under the garage are rotated towards the driveway. He said, I recommend removing the garage door, installing concrete blocks, remove drain at the door, damp proof wall, backfill with dirt. You could install a driveway on top that drains towards the road, which, which would prevent runoff from entering your bait garage base. And I got it. He had sent me that a couple of years ago and that's, that's got me thinking and you keep thinking it's never going to happen again. But then it rains and you, you know, you, you're, I'm back out there. Whether it's, I wrote in my, in my letter, whether it's three o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the afternoon, I gotta stop what I'm doing and, and go address this. So it's, that's been my world. So I'd appreciate it. Any help?
All right. Mr. Walsh, any questions?
No questions.
Attorney, uh, Commissioner Nadine?
No questions.
Commissioner Callahan?
No questions.
Commissioner Cloud?
My only question is, so are you still entering from beach to get to your garage now?
Yes, yes. It's gonna be, it's gonna be moved over about, it's gonna be farther up Beach Street about, I, I'm gonna guess say ten, fifteen feet.
I feel your pain. It's why I sold my house on Tocana.
Really?
Cause I used to get water in the basement. I had enough.
Unbelievable.
So, so just, just to clarify, is your garage going to be directly across from the garage at number ninety Farmington? So it'll be kind of symmetrical there?
Yeah, it should be symmetrical. And I, I didn't really think about it until I was talking to Dennis, Dennis, uh, uh, my neighbor here tonight. But yeah, it'll be symmetrical. Yeah.
Okay.
And the. Be very close.
The, the large I drove by there, you only have that one large tree that's coming down then, right?
Yes.
Is that tree healthy or unhealthy? Well, again, we can't hear you, so.
I had it cabled once about twenty years ago, but it hasn't helped. It's not in great, it's not in the best physical condition.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody here wants to speak in favor of the application? Yes, sir. And again, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dennis Evans. I live at four Beach Street. And I'm probably the most affected person here, cause I look right at Barry's house. And he's wrong on one thing. It's been flooding for forty years, not twenty years. And I did have some uh, comments, but most of the comments have already been mentioned. The one thing I, I have to say is it's a little bland looking structure. I would appreciate if maybe you could take another look at it and put a little more into it to make it a little more attractive. So it's right in all our eyes as we enter Oakland Gardens. Um, otherwise, it's a fine project. Even in a bland garage, be better looking in that dark hole on the side of his foundation. So even if that's just covered over grass and and nicely pitched back into Beach Street, it'd be a major improvement. And it certainly improved my breakfast every morning looking at it. That's what I had to say.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions of the, of gentlemen? All right. Then at this point, we can uh, do you want, then we can close the public hearing?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we have uh, people still online, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone who is listening in wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to the applicant?
I have one person raising their hand so far. Ben Crinick, uh, Ben, you should be allowed to talk now. You just have to unmute your microphone.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Everybody, Benjamin Crinick, ninety Farmington Avenue.
Please go ahead, sir.
So Barry definitely in favor, committee in favor of this. I think I agree with Dennis. It would uh, really improve the aesthetics. Um, you know, and I have, I've been here for ten years now, seen it flood a lot. Um, I, I, I do worry, um, and I, you know, definitely in favor of the project. I do worry that with the rain, without having your, your basement be the catch for six thousand gallons of water, it will now become further up Beach Street and will fall down into my property and my basement. My sub pump now, in the last couple of years, runs almost all the time year round. So I'm just asking, you know, I don't know if this is the right forum. I apologize. I'm relatively new to this. Um, what is the avenue to, to appeal to the town for more, you know, drainage support? You know, whether it be in conjunction with this project or separately to make sure that it doesn't, you know, get worse or happen again. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Um, anyone else wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to the application? Garrett, anybody?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll just answer Mr. Crinick's question if you don't.
You don't mind?
Ben, if you'd uh, contact um, Dylan Riley in the, in the uh, engineering department. You can speak with him. Um, so that being said, uh, if there's anyone else who would like to speak in favor and opposition to the application, please raise your hand, use the raise hand function on Zoom. Again, if there's anyone that would like to speak for or against this application, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
And I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
A motion to approve application for variance to locate detached garage and other than required yard for the property located at ninety-six Farmington Avenue, R nine OG zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Um, discussion. Mr. Walsh?
No comments.
Your motion? You have to give a reason then for uh, your, your.
Uh, my motion?
Yeah.
Uh, there appears to be um, a hardship here that Mr. Hannenbaum has explained to all of us, both in his photos um, and in his application today uh, with the flooding that's been occurring for many years. Um, and additionally, that it appears um, he would have to pave over a large portion of his yard to um, put the garage in a conforming zone. Uh, additionally, uh, aesthetically, I think it would um, conform with the, the neighborhood.
Commissioner Callahan?
Solid evidence of hardship by favor of the application.
Commissioner Cloud?
No comment.
And I will just say that I agree that the uh, applicant has shown sufficient hardship. Um, our board does not get to um, decide on the, on the architectural aesthetics of the garage. We just approve the location. Um, but it might be to your benefit to put up more than just a simple post and beam garage, make it seem more consistent with the neighborhood. So it's just a suggestion. That's not something we uh, uh, order. So based on that, I also believe that it would be, that this will be uh, in harmony with the neighborhood and it, and the, and the applicant has shown a sufficient hardship. So I will be voting in favor of this. So let's go to vote.
We'll call. All right. Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Nadine?
Aye.
Commissioner Cloud?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Chairman Shawhorn?
Aye.
The votes are five to zero. The variance is approved.
Right. Oh, yeah. I forgot. We now have, there's, is there a planners report?
No, there's not.
All right. So um, I'll entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Move through. Does anyone even remember the March twenty twenty-three?
I moved to approve the minutes of the March twenty twenty-three ZBA meeting.
Is there a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Minutes approved. Entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month.
Right. Thank you, everyone.